I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you do roll call attendance for those who are present, Marty?
Mary Jo Rosman-owsley.
Here.
Mary Jo Radcliffe. Patty Jacobson.
Here.
Laurel Mead.
Here.
Amy Huffman.
Here.
Naomi McFatmore-Cowd.
Here.
Scott Arden.
Here.
Has a meeting been notified to the public according to open meeting laws?
Yes.
Thank you. We're now at the point of public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Okay, we'll move on to community engagement. Our board accommodation people are not here at this time. I would like to make a motion to move 7.1 Focus on Purpose to the head then. May I have a second? Second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, we'll move ahead with 7.1 Focus on Purpose and we have 6th to 8th grade English and Language Arts here tonight.
All right, so we are back to talk about English Language Arts again, but at the middle school level. So I have Amy Rec up here. She is the PLC leader for the 6th through 8th grade English Language Arts teachers. So we are appreciative for you to have us to share a little bit about that. So just to start, we're gonna just run through some pieces kind of similar to our last meeting. We're gonna share the structure at the middle school for English Language Arts teaching. We'll kind of run through some of the big ideas as well. We'll share some of the work of the department for this school year and then we'll also do next steps.
So we are blessed to have 80-minute blocks of English Literature Arts every day. Two teachers at 6th grade, three at 7, two at 8th grade. And we make common planning time during the week to work with our grade level teachers. And the rotating block this year has been really, really fantastic. We have a class at the end of the day, then we'll have that same group of kids the beginning of the next day. It really saves a lot of instructional time because you lose a lot at the end of the day. So it's nice to not have the same group again. It's really quite fantastic to see.
Can we just talk a little bit more about that because the board had asked for continual updates on our scheduling changes for this great year? And that was one of our significant changes at the middle school, was kind of the rotating block. So that the group that you have first thing in the morning who might be half asleep is not the same group that you have every morning. And so if you wouldn't mind speaking to that a little bit?
Absolutely. So the group I had first block today, I'll have in the middle of the day tomorrow. And the next day I'll have them at the end of the day. So you really get to see kids at different times of the day. I've not heard any complaints by any teachers. It's been really, really awesome.
And that's 7th and 8th grades for reading and literature.
Yep, and the kids also appreciate it and they understand, like I just had someone today. It's the last block of the day, my brain's not working. So to have the different times of day is awesome.
All right, so we're gonna just share some of the, what's going on here? Some of the big ideas for, in the area of English Language Arts. So these are all of the kind of sub areas for English Language Arts. And so we talked about all of these last time, just to share the top one, reading foundational skills. That one kind of falls off at middle elementary and so that's not something covered at the middle school level, but they do cover the reading literature and informational text. They get heavy into writing, including grammar, speaking and listening, and language is a large part as well. And so that link on the bottom, if you wouldn't mind just clicking on that. Instead of bringing up all of our papers, we just thought we'd put the pictures in. So we'll just kind of scroll through those quickly to give you an idea of the different units and things that are covered at the middle school level. So as we go through, and Jill, you can just keep going through them. You can just kind of get an idea. We, again, like, we shared a little bit at the elementary level. We do reading workshop and writing workshop throughout those 80-minute blocks. There's different units of fiction, biography, lots of literary analysis that happens within fiction. Lots of work on theme, figurative language. There's also nonfiction and research within the writing units. There's a heavy emphasis at the middle school level on argumentative essay, which is something that every grade level works on in some way, shape, or form and is an important skill for communication moving forward, as well as preparing them for high school, not only for life. Feature articles are also composed, different research projects at each grade level, historical narrative, expository writing, informational, writing of a variety of kinds. And then there's also, as you can kind of see as she clicks through, we have really bolstered the scope and sequence for grammar. We brought in the resource that you all approved, the Writing Coach, last year. So the teachers have really appreciated using that resource to have a good clear scope and sequence for grammar instruction.
We've also used that resource in our rubrics and we're sharing that cross-curricular. So I just shared some of our nonfiction writing rubrics with Social Studies PLC lead so that we're having that consistency of expectations across content areas too. So, and I've also offered to let Jacob Perner use our grammar books. And he's open to the idea as they start doing some of their nonfiction writing. So 6th grade celebrations, feature article, and poetry. They actually had Stephanie Bodine, author, come in and talk to the kids. And some of the kids want her books and it was a great, great day for them. 7th grade, they do the photo essay project, is one of the kids' favorites. Lit circles, I think kids at all, 3rd grade levels really enjoy those. 7th grade also do a lot of read-alouts and the kids really enjoy being read to and talking about the text in that way. 8th grade, we have our book tasting and speed dating for books, for kids to choose books in a more interesting way maybe. The GAIN's Plan for the ACT Aspire, I think, Dave, did you mention that at a prior meeting?
It was a couple months ago.
Yeah, where the kids basically, I sat down with them and they made greatest area of individual need success plan based on their results and what they specifically needed to work on.
All right, so then just to kind of talk through some of the work that the 6th through 8th ELA teachers have been doing this year. With the change in the schedule, we did have some new folks that took on teaching ELA for a block. And so bringing them up to speed on the curriculum and the assessments and all that's happening in the teaching has been good work for the PLC to kind of make that possible because now people are teaching multiple content areas. They have a priority PLC schedule at the middle school so that there are designated times when all of the teachers of ELA, even if it's just for one block of their day, are all together so they can have some common conversations, which has been successful. And as Amy mentioned a little bit earlier, they did create some common rubrics across the middle school. So each grade level had, did that work over the summer to really have better consistency of expectations within that scope and sequence of writing and that common assessment that they can use amongst all the teachers of that grade level in writing. And they're aligned 6, 7, 8 as well, so that there's a progression as the students move through mastering the standards. We talked a little bit about the grammar as well, but that really has been some good work this year as they've utilized that resource for the first time, working together on fidelity to that scope and sequence and implementing that resource. They also use a supplemental digital program called iXL for grammar where students are able to work on skills at their individual level. So not only are they getting that whole group at the grade level, but then they're also able to either work forward or work back depending upon where their skills are needing to have some support. And then they've also had some, during their tiger time, they've been able to target some skill work in an intervention way. And so there's a teacher at every grade level that is designated to provide intervention at a just kind of a supportive level, but really based on class assessment and that has worked very well. And then just to remind that we also have Karen DeBerg is the middle school interventionist. And she does interventions in both math and English Language Arts, specifically reading. But she is at the middle school, working hard all day with kids at a much more intensive level as well. And then just to kind of share, keep you up to speed on the continued ongoing work. They, as a team, they've been working with consultant Peggy Black, who's one of the consultants that we've brought in this school year. And so you can kind of see the focus of her work there, working on learning targets and not just what students are going to do, but then also using the language today I'm going to teach you. And so kind of what is that learning that we're going to accomplish together first and foremost? And then making sure that we're always adhering to that rigor of the standards and making sure that we're achieving that through the student learning. And then the team is going to be taking an exciting trip, but I'll let Amy tell you about that.
The CCBC is on campus at UW-Madison and their job is to read young adult literature. So all the new books that come out, oddly enough, we might not have time to read them all, they do. And so I sent them kind of our demographic, the students we serve, excuse me, what types of topics our kids might be interested in. So then they kind of tailor their presentation to us so that we can find new and engaging literature for our students and kind of keep up with everything that's new.
Would you share who's all going out to visit?
Sure. It's Laura, Dave Cowley, Mike Downey, Mr. Rue, and me.
So 2, 7, Wendy, and 1, 6, then Mr. Rue.
All right, and then just to share some next steps with you. As they look to round out the rest of the school year and moving into the summer, some of the work that is in front of them, they're going to continue that work with Peggy Black. She'll be coming back at the beginning of March and a couple more times throughout the school year, continuing that work through the vertical articulation meetings that the teachers have been having where they've been meeting as K-12 departments and looking at kind of how their skills build on each other over time. A couple of things have come out of that work, one of which being kind of reviewing the citation expectations. Where in intermediate elementary does that work start? And how does that grow throughout the middle school so that students have some mastery over some citation expectations as they move towards the high school? And then continuing to align rubrics through the elementary, since middle school has their alignment and high school's got some alignment, kind of making sure that there's some good alignment through the K-12 system. And then as Amy had mentioned, how can we utilize those rubrics in other content areas as well, not just writing? Specifically, social studies where they do a lot of writing, reading, speaking, and listening around that content as well. And so Amy and Jake are working on a how-to-write-like-a-tiger expectation. So that could hang in every classroom at the middle school. So whenever you're writing, this is how you write like a tiger at the middle school. And so it's kind of a work in progress yet, but definitely something that could be great for kids. And then also working on reviewing some reading assessments and aligning those 6, 8 as well. Do you have any questions for us?
Amy. Go ahead, Patty.
80 minutes is a long time. Is that in one place with the same group of children for 80 minutes?
Yes, and it doesn't seem like 80 minutes. We do allow them to take a break. So there's a bell in the middle because science and social studies still have the 40 minutes. So they do get a natural break, where they get up, grab a drink, it's 3 minutes. They come back and get settled and I wouldn't want anything other than a block. It goes really well.
And students aren't just sitting in the same location, you know, not doing anything but looking at the teacher that whole time. There's definitely a variety of experiencing.
As exciting as that would be.
No, there's enough shifting gears, but can you talk about some of the big components that you can move around so that it feels new again as opposed to you sitting up there talking for the entire time? Sure, so usually I start with a mini lesson. So today we talked for 10 minutes about digging deeper into their lit circle blocks and how do the character setting contribute to the theme. And so we went through some examples, it was maybe 10 to 12 minutes. And then they get some time to work on their own. Then they had their lit circle meetings, so they were talking in small groups with their peers. And it's break time, and then we kind of shift gears again and go through a similar routine, so.
It's good to hear so many positive things about the new schedule.
Oh, I love it.
In all fairness, she was a very strong proponent of it before we started. She had experience already with the rotating and she was a very strong cheerleader. So she is not going to tell you anything about that personally, but.
And I was glad to see that, you know, you're addressing all the different departments. And, you know, you've mentioned cross-subject over the different departments, especially with Mr. Perner. Can you give some more examples of other teachers that you've worked with to incorporate the literacy and writing? And particular thinking of like Fiyette, like with the rules of the game. I know that was mentioned back in the day when we were talking about schedule changes.
That's a great question. And we haven't, I haven't worked specifically with Fiyette. I know she does some writing and she's got some posters on the wall that do.
That incorporate the literacy?
Okay, good. Some literacy. I can't talk very much. I don't know how the district's handling.
And I think that her specific mention of Mr. Perner, he's the 8th grade social studies teacher, but he's also the PLC leader for all the social studies at the middle school. And so, yeah, they're kind of leading, no, that's okay. They're kind of leading that charge together on how should we do more reading and writing?
In every aspect of your day.
How can those skills look similar across different content areas? As opposed to in Mr. Perner's class, we write this way and Mrs. Recup's class, we write that way. And so trying to make more consistency.
Which goes back to PLC and it goes out to all the social studies teachers.
Thank you.
Which also came from conversations with the high school PLCs when Mr. Rick was talking about the same reading expectations for us at all. And so really an awful lot of curiosity.
Yes, okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have two more questions.
I'm wondering what a lit circle is.
Oh, sure.
So lit circles can be done a couple different ways. My first one was just interest-based. I wanted them to find a book they liked and read it. And so they got put into groups based on what book they liked. So we meet about five times throughout the course of the novel. And each lit circle meeting, there's a different objective. So they might be a discussion director where they use Bloom's Taxonomy to come up with some deeper questions. It might be the connector, you're connecting text itself to world summary. So there's different roles that they bring to the table. And they talk about their role so that really you're getting a better picture of the novel at each meeting. I have deepened that a little bit this time. This time they're in lit circles by level. So then I have the choices there for them that's at an appropriate level for them. That was the book tasting because they don't necessarily know that it's by level. They go to their fancy name card and they sit there and they pick a book that's at their table. So it's just a great way for kids to talk about literature. And I try to make it kind of like a book club atmosphere so they can bring in food, they can sit on the floor, they just sit and talk about books.
And I have one more question.
Fairly.
I will. I was just wondering, it said that the learning, I can't think of the right name right now, but she was able to see twice as many students. And I thought that was interesting. She was able to see.
Or the intervention.
Yeah, Ari mentioned this. With the change in the schedule, that was made possible. She is able to see students on a trimester basis now. For before, it was either a quarter or a semester and a lot of times she'd see kids for an entire semester. Which she still does, see some groups for a semester. But some students just need that bolster of skills for a little bit of a shorter amount of time. But a trimester is still a fair amount of time. And so it's nice because there's a lot of opportunity for her to really meet kids where they're at. They might see, she might sit in for two trimesters or a semester. So that just has allowed her to grow the number of positions. Great questions. Any others? Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for coming, Amy. Appreciate it.
Move on to gifts and grants. We have one.
There was a thousand dollar, no, a hundred dollar, sorry. I didn't think it was zero. It's a dangerous guy, but winners are picking money. Jill doesn't like when I talk about funds that way. So you're on the wrong side. It matters here, sorry. So Sarah Helverson has applied for egg in the classroom cream from the Farm Bureau. And she is talking specifically about when her kids go over to the elementary schools to show them how to make ice cream. So this is going to help fund some of the supplies for that. So a hundred dollars to Mrs. Helverson. It's actually going to benefit the elementary kids as well when they go to make ice cream.
Is there a motion to approve? Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. School calendar.
All right, so I'd like to talk with you a little bit about the process that we go to. First, if you could leave this up for just one moment. So this was from 2017 and I just want to take a moment to share with you. It has been a couple years since the state changed the requirements. It used to be 180 student day requirement. That's when you heard a lot of people, when it was going to snow, get them in for half a day. If you feed them lunch, it comes as a day. Well, that no longer is a factor. We can feed them, not feed them, doesn't matter. And so about the instructional minutes that they are in school, minutes and hours. So I don't know if you remember that, but the first couple of times we've called a half-day appearance like, you just wanted to feed them. Nope, we really thought the roads were going to be okay. So I wanted to share with you what the average number of student days was in our region. And so this is from our CISA. And these are student face-to-face days. And so this was accurate as of 2017. And so there's very few that are still up at the 180. You can see some have really dropped quite a bit below that. And we have kind of hung close to that, but have taken some of those student days in lieu of some professional development time for our staff. Because if we are to bring in all of our staff for a professional development day and pay their stipends, that is an expensive venture as well. And so the other thing that was an interesting point for me is the average teacher contract. And so that third column on the right is, yeah, right, is the difference between the number of days students are there and the number of days teachers are contracted to be there. And so, for example, it's not as clean as that. You can look and say, we have 12, 13 days. But remember, two of those are counted as parent-teacher conferences, so they're not on the calendar anywhere. They're the hours that staff are here at night. One of them is a flexible in-service day. There's two vacation days in there. And so it's not quite as clean as that. And we don't really have, this was just a real quick CISA sent it out, people added in. I don't know how close to accurate all of those are because I don't know if they count as their vacation days or didn't. But I just thought that that was an interesting background information for you. So the current school year we're in had 178 student days scheduled into it. Okay, would you go to the calendar model? And I had asked Marty to print this out for all of you so we could be looking at the same thing at the same time. So once again, to tackle the calendar, I sent an email out to all staff in a survey at the beginning of the year. Who wants to come and talk calendar? We had the conversation in November before I was gone. And then it stopped and then we had seven snow days. And so calendar conversations got a little bit stymied in there. But here was some of our discussion. There continues to be a need for the professional development time. And the other thing, when you look at our calendar, is we try hard to be done that first week of school, first week of June. And so, and they on Friday, June 5th, has a nice ending to it while still allowing for some intermittent days off throughout the year. When we surveyed families last, and we are planning on adding some calendar questions to this year's family feedback survey. When we surveyed families last, they don't want us to squish and be done super early. They prefer some three-day weekends interspersed throughout. And they were pretty clear that they would prefer several smaller vacations as opposed to one big whopping vacation. As a committee, we've talked about, because you can see neither this current year or for next year do we have a solid week off for spring break. And we've talked about that. If that's something we want to do, we should probably get into the cycle of every other year or something like that and communicate it to families so that they can plan accordingly. So what we are talking about, as each of the buildings has looked through their instructional minutes and we've analyzed them every which way this year to make sure we are going to meet the requirements. There is, at least two buildings have talked about, is there any way we could lengthen the school day for next year? They want more minutes within our bells. And so I started with the teacher contract and the number of days that students come. There's not a number of minutes that's spelled out anywhere. There's just past practice has been where we're at for a long time. And so we are proposing that we add 10 minutes onto each student day for next year. So we go down to 177 student days from the current 178, but we would add 10 minutes onto each day. When you look at that, if you consider 10 minutes, that means for every six days of the school year, we're actually adding one whole hour of instruction. And so you can imagine how quickly that will add up. So that'll serve a couple purposes. If we have another winter like this one with seven snow days, we likely wouldn't be short minutes. There is a few districts throughout the state that have called as many snow days as we have, but they're not in an emergency situation with minutes because their school day is that much longer that they are able to absorb that more readily. When we had the scheduling expert here last year, Dr. Redding, he talked to us, when he looked at all of our bell schedules, he said that our average, correct me if I'm wrong, it was over the table, but he said that our average day is about the same, but our instructional minutes is less. Meaning we have other things as a part of our school day that are taking time away from the instruction. And so when we look at what are the recommended guidelines for English and math and literacy and all of those different components, it just feels incredibly squished throughout the day. So we are proposing adding 10 extra minutes to every school day, re-eliminating one school day. And then you'll see that on Monday, June 8th, we've added one more professional development day. We would, the other conversation was, do we make the teacher contract days only 190 instead of 191? But honestly, at the end of the school year, particularly like the high school level where they're giving finals all the way up to that 5th, having that day on Monday, the 8th, to wrap up that grading and report cards would really be much, much, much appreciated. At the other levels, the report cards go home with the kids on Friday, the 5th. But that ending is such a flurry with the field trips and all that activity. It would be nice to come back on the 8th and really start to, not start to, but really solidify some of the plans for the fall and talk about what, because all of our teachers have PD expectations during the summer. So just some time when they're not worried about all that other stuff to sit together and talk about it moving forward. So we also added a third snow day makeup into this calendar. So there are three that are already built in. Again, today, this year, it seems like, what do you mean only three? Only two years ago, we didn't use even both of them that were scheduled in. And so you just really, really never know. But if we don't use it as a snow day, then it stays as a vacation day. And so no harm, no follow. And with this calendar, we would be recommending that graduation ceremony would be Sunday, June 7th. Questions, comments, concerns? We did not send this out for a family vote because when that committee came together, we had a hard time coming up with two options. The other option could have gotten us done, you know, like June 1st or something like that. But then there weren't any breaks spread throughout the year. And to be honest, the staff was like, what if people pick that one? That's going to be miserable for all of us. And there really is something to be said for needing a little mental break every now and then. Particularly when you get to this time of year, this year not so much of a crisis because of the frequent snow days. But most years, there is a need for just a little opportunity to step back a little bit.
And with the June 7th graduation date, that kind of sticks to our tradition that we've had.
Do they start in the morning?
Yeah, the challenge that we have is, because our bus is jockeying around. And so the elementary are getting kids as early as 7:25, they're getting off the bus. But they don't have all of their kids until like 7:50. And so you can't really start an instruction during all of that time because you don't have all of your bus kids. 7:45, you're pretty darn close, but there may be some stranglers. So I believe 7:50, 45 is when instruction starts at Forest Street. And 51 is when it starts at Red Creek. And then is it 55 at middle school, high school, your morning bell?
52.
50, 50, sorry. And then at the end of the day, the elementary is dismissed at 2:51 right now. And the secondary dismissed at 3:06 right now.
So you add that 10 minutes onto the end.
And nobody wants to come earlier in the morning. No one believes it's best for kids, our high school kids, to come 10 minutes early in the morning.
Now, I did hear on the news, one of the school districts, I'm not sure if it was in Marriory or Chippa, are adding 10 minutes to their day with a snow makeup for this year.
So the next item on our agenda is how we're patching up this year. So we can certainly segue through it and kind of put it all in the same picture. And so for the current school year, when we do our minute check, just as typical, the middle school. middle school has plenty of instructional minutes. They, their schedule, just because of the way they have it divided, they don't even take a full 30 minutes for lunch, because it's lunch and recess together makes the 30 minutes. And so the middle school always has plenty of instructional minutes when we do our calculation. There's a spreadsheet that Marty has to get the schedule from each one of the buildings, and you have to take out one passing time and any recess time over 30 minutes and blah, blah, blah. So when you start taking out, if the two elementary schools have similar bus pickup and drop-off times, but our youngest kids, K and 1, have an additional 25-minute recess, Forest Street finds itself in a larger hole. I think we could all sit here pretty reasonably and say, boy, K and 1 need to get up and move around a little bit more. So having extra recess isn't necessarily a bad thing. It just means that we need to find someplace else to fill that hole. And so what we've decided to do, there are two days, this Thursday being the first one. Thursday was supposed to be a professional development day for staff, and we communicated it quite a while ago to families, that Thursday is now a regular school day for all students, and that professional development day is the move to Friday. So students still have Friday off. It was supposed to be, no, kids were supposed to be done on Wednesday, then just staff on Thursday, nobody on Friday. We've altered that, that kids come on Thursday, staff on Friday. And everyone can enjoy Saturday and Sunday off is the way we've landed. Then the second day, the full day that we've taken is April 18th, is the Thursday leading into Easter week. And we were supposed to have off Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday was a snow day makeup. We've taken that Thursday and made that a regular school day for all families. I've gotten very, very little pushback or comments on either of those pieces. People are like, yep, seven days is a lot, we've got to figure it out. Good work. I've not had one single person say, gee, I really wish you would have added them in June, we'd love to have come back a second week. Nobody has said that. The last part, because we really were down some minutes at Forest Street, and high school is sneaking in pretty close, but they're making it, they're making it, is starting March 1st, we're adding 15 minutes onto every day. And that we've had some questions asked by some of our families. We feel like 15 minutes is impactful enough that we can actually add some minutes on to each of the instructional periods. As to just saying we're going to dismiss five minutes later, that's not really instructional because you're just going to wait that last bell five minutes, and you're not really gaining anything anywhere else in the day. And that would still leave us really, really close, because let's be honest, it's still only February, and we could have more snow, more inclement weather, which we're hoping not, but we want to be prepared, so we're not just cutting it that close. The frustration or concern that I've heard from several families is that they wish that we would have taken the Friday early releases away and reallocated that as instructional minutes as opposed to the 15 minutes each day. And my discussion back to those people has been, I absolutely understand how, to somebody on the outside, it looks like a very easy fix, but to those of us on the inside that have really dug in deep to that PLC work, you just heard how much Amy was talking and Stephanie was talking about Peggy Black, that consultant that we brought in. So the way that currently works is Peggy comes and works with a few teachers from the team, a few teachers from the team, they go and practice in their classrooms, then they get together Friday during PLC, and they get to talk about all that work that they've been doing together. And it kind of creates an action research cycle, if you will. And if we lose all of that PLC time, all of those initiatives that we've been working on, there really is no other time. I don't feel that we can look at our staff and say, you're just going to stay an hour late one night for the rest of the year. I just don't think that that is going to be reasonable. And so while every team is certainly not at the same place, we have an awful lot of really high-functioning teams that if we were to take away that hour, they would be extremely disappointed and would just really struggle with where they were going to do all that collaboration stuff, which is a good problem. That's why we made the time, so that they would use it. Now, as they start to use it, to take it away would feel really counterproductive. And so I did share that with families, and they still aren't crazy about it, but they understood our rationale. The other problem that I did discuss, and they're having some conversations, we do have one grade level, and perhaps there's more that eat early, but there's one specific grade level at Red Creek. They eat lunch at 10:30 in the morning. And so they're saying another 15 minutes up to the end of the day before the bus ride. And I said, I absolutely can understand that. So we're talking about sending them home with a snack or something in the afternoon, building in a little snack in the afternoon, because that does get to be a long time. If they have an hour bus ride at the end of the day, 15 minutes does matter. So we are talking about that. So those two days that were vacation days have become regular student days, starting March 1st, 15 minutes on to each day, maintaining the one-hour early release every Friday. And we will be flush and even a little bit in the black, should Mother Nature decide she wants to dump on us again. Not that I'm daring her, I'm just saying that we're in an okay place.
Okay, the board needs to take action on the school calendar and graduation date. I do have one question about that, about adding the 10 minutes on. Does that affect any of the eligibility of insurance for those aides and things like that?
So we won't necessarily add 10, for next year's calendar, it won't necessarily add 10 minutes on to everybody's teaching or everybody's contract time. In all of the buildings, except Melanie's, students have some flexibility in the morning when they get there, so we could push their start time back five minutes and then extend it, you know, the other way, five minutes, to be able to cover for that. So we won't have to change their, there'll still be 7.25 hours for the teachers, and then those aides that are either seven and a half or six and three-quarters, they will just need to be scheduled throughout the days that we cover both ends of it, is what will need to happen. Right now, Melanie's staff has kids in the classroom as early as 7:25. As they're getting off, they come to eat breakfast in the classrooms. And so, but if they dismiss at 2:51, which will be 3:01 next year with the added 10 minutes, it's going to be impossible for her staff, because now at 3:05, they're supposed to be ready to leave. That's the building where the teachers are walking each of the kids out to the buses. And so we are hoping to not have to do breakfast in the gymnasium next year, or I'm sorry, not have to do breakfast in the classrooms next year, put it back in the gymnasium where it used to be, so that teachers could then start five, 10 minutes later in the morning, and the kids are supervised by other staff, either on the playground or in the gymnasium. It does not necessarily mean 10 additional work minutes for everybody.
Okay, okay, thank you. Are there any questions about the 1920 calendar? And we'll just combine that with the graduation date recommendation of June 7th. Any questions or further discussion on that? Okay, is there a motion to approve the proposed 2019-20 school calendar?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any more questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. And then Dr. Silverson explained the plan for the instructional hours. We don't have to approve that plan, but do you have any more questions on what the plan is that she and the administration and staff have come up with? Okay, we'll move on to the community engagement survey.
So as I shared last month, this is the year when we do the broader input, requesting of input from the community, not just those that have students in our district. And so I wanted to share with you the questions and the format. And I tried really hard to keep it short, yet there's a lot of stuff we want to know about. So it got a little bit lengthy. And per the discussion last time, you wanted us to print it off and include it in the Tigger Tribune, as well as ways for them to take it electronically. And so I wanted you to see a little bit, if we, the one that would be included in the Tigger Tribune, we would modify the format so that it was much smaller, not all these pages. This is the electronic survey, just printed out, so we could reformat it so it didn't take up quite so many pages. So I'd like to talk just a little bit about each one of the pillars. That's how it is organized, is by each pillar of the strategic plan. First, the community engagement. I felt like it was important for the families, or not just families, every community member to read what our goal was first, and then kind of frame their thinking as they go through and answer the rest of the questions. So we start by talking about what our goal under the community engagement pillar is. And then perhaps some of the questions make a little more sense, once they know what our goal was and what we are shooting for. The, my challenge when I was wording some of them, how do you prefer to receive information regarding the school district of Laker fault? If we're doing this to our non-parents, I mean, if this is meant to be everybody, well, we don't do school messenger to them, they don't get classroom newsletters, we don't... So I was struggling with, we're going to use the same survey for our families, and so I don't know your thoughts, if we should be more comprehensive, because there certainly are more ways that we communicate. If you're a parent, there's, you know, a bunch more that we do, but I can't send you a school messenger if you're not in our system. I'm sure they're disappointed about that.
Especially for those 5:30 hours.
Right, 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 right. And so the other part that was important to us, that this survey is in lieu of doing those community forums all over again, where we try to invite people in to ask these questions face-to-face. So while we want the data to be, you know, able to graph it and collate it quickly, we also want them to have the opportunity for narratives, to give us their feedback in a way that works for them. And so do you have any comments or suggestions about our communication? We try to, it gets a little wordy, because I don't feel like you can just ask them a question. If they don't have kids, you have to give them a little background information. And so number seven gives them a little bit of a background about what we're doing with our business partners before I ask them what they think about what we're doing with our business partners and so on. And so we're trying to get at questions that are a wide variety of things that all address that same goal. All of the goals end the exact same way. We say, again, our current goal under the community engagement pillar reads, and then they read that entire goal. And we're just asking them, does this goal still match with your values and beliefs about the role the district should play in our community? So each one of the goals ends with that. Does this still match your values and the way you believe our district should be serving our community? And then that last one gets a little bit at the values. What key words or ideas would you like to see added or deleted from a strategic plan goal in this area? So those two questions are consistent for each of the four pillars that are included. Again, asking for a quick measurement on the 1-2-4 Likert scale, but then also giving them the opportunity for some narrative feedback. Any thoughts on the formatting? Does that feel like a way to get at information, or are there questions you hope we would see? I'll tell you, Jill and I both struggled a little bit with the student success pillar, because when you think about the work we do, it's all about student success. That is the heart, the heavy lifting, the why we exist. And we have the smallest number of questions under here, because the student success stuff is the action plan goals that our teachers are working on with the administrators and not quite as open for as much input, I guess, is, and that doesn't sound right, but I don't know how else, they don't sit in the classrooms, how can I ask them what they feel about the instruction that's happening in the classrooms? Parents, we can ask that a lot easier of, but that 60% of the community that doesn't have kids in our schools, it's tough to ask them about classroom instruction, because they don't know. So we talked about being a welcome and inviting place, just their perception of a high-quality educational experience. Do they think our students are graduating prepared? And then back to those two goal statements, do they, you know, what words or phrases would they like to see? I don't know if you have thoughts on that, but it just felt odd when you look at the whole thing. The biggest area of focus for us is the least one, you know, we're asking the least amount of input. So we go into our people, and we talk about our values. Again, we ask them their perception of a lot of the things that were underneath that strategic plan goal, and leads right into the finance and facilities. So I don't know if you have feedback or something that you were hoping we'd ask that's not on there, or if the format seems agreeable to you.
Thank you for including that in our packet, too.
Is this, we've done this before.
So when we first created it, we're in year four of our strategic plan. When we did it the first time, we hosted those forums in all, we had, that's when we hired Studer, and they came in, and we probably had over 250, close to 300 people come in different groups to come and give that feedback. And from there, it went to, we had a team that had community representation and teacher and administrator. They were kind of the warehouse for all that information, and then they would draft out something, and we were the leadership team of teachers. And so it just kept moving between all these different groups in the past, and then we landed with the four pillars and the goals, and then the action plans beneath them. Because we feel like our goals are still, none of them were written like finite check, we accomplished that, they're all about continuous growth, our conversation this time was, do we need to start from scratch, or can we start from the pillars that we currently have and see if there needs to be any modifications made? As opposed to going through the process as if no plan exists and try to build it, can we start from what we currently have and see what modifications need to happen? So this is instead of the face-to-face conversations, but even when we did the face-to-face, we did publish it widely and offer people the opportunity to give us feedback, either in writing or in person, or, you know, whatever, once it was finally done. But this is a means to try to update it without having to start from scratch.
Well, that was my question, is we wouldn't know where we were going if we didn't know where we'd been.
Exactly.
So, you know, using this as the same sort of a format, we'd have a better comparison.
That's what I feel like. And because honestly, we asked them, what do we say, does this goal still match with your values and beliefs about the role our staff plays in the important work in our community? Maybe they're going to say, I don't care if, you know, whatever, it could be. But we give them the opportunity to say, yes, this goal still feels like it aligns to me, and then what key words would you like to see added? So our hope was that we could do some tweaking as opposed to starting from scratch.
So then this could be a tool going forward, too?
This will springboard to the next five-year plan. Absolutely, that's our intention, that. This is the, from the first five years, this now is in that year that we need to start crafting those actual plans moving forward, so we have the widespread input again, and then springboard the next five years forward.
A true strategic model.
Absolutely. So if you look at it again and find any areas, oh, and then we did ask a lot of demographic on the back, and sometimes when you ask that stuff, we talked to other surveyors, and they say, sometimes when you ask people to check off some demographic stuff upfront, they get a little twitchy, like, why do you care? Why do you want to know that? Why, you know, whatever. And then they may not fill it out, so we're so sly, we put it at the end. But we did try to explain to them that, because we do have a diverse community, I just said, parents of young children may want something different from the district than older individuals that no longer grab school-aged children. As we strive to make sure our goals are in alignment with our community, we need to know a little bit about you, so that we can focus our efforts accordingly. So just trying to give them the rationale. We're not just being nosy, we want to be able to disaggregate our data. What do our parents think? What do our non-parents think? What do our staff members think? So that was our intention, but we did ask them some demographic questions at the end.
Perfect.
Thank you for that feedback.
We'll move on to employment.
And so there was no employment that needed action tonight. Just sharing with you that Jennifer McKibben, used to be Jennifer Gunther, she's been with the district, she's been with me, I think 27 years, yes. And she is retiring at the end of February. So most of our staff, it's a June, but she's going to stand alone, and she's retiring at the end of this month. So we are so appreciative of all that she has done. She, as, when I started at Givhardt, she was my assistant, and honestly, she could complete my sentences some days. She's just really incredibly skilled at her work, and so we will miss her greatly, but...
Okay, thank you. Next, the achievement gap reduction report.
And so the elementaries are going to use this as their little update for you as well, so. You push the button on the side, and then it will lay.
So AGR stands for achievement gap reduction. It used to be the Sage, if you are familiar with that term a little bit more, this is the new Sage goal. So we've got two goals at Forest Street, one for reading and one for math, and we target kindergarten and first grade. And so for kindergarten and math, in both grades, we want to decrease the percentage of students that are on the blue on watch level by different percentages. So in kindergarten, we have 6% that scored on the blue on watch level, and we want to decrease that by 3%, so cut it in half from fall to spring. And we're going to do that through instructional coaching, and we're actually working with Ashley Legear, our math coach, comes in and visits the classrooms and teaches teachers about how to question students about math. And in reading, we want to raise the level of students that are at grade level expectations to 70%. And our winter assessment is the first assessment that we give to kindergarteners, and that one showed that 66% of kindergarteners are on track to meet their targeted growth goals. So we are on a strong start in kindergarten this year. In math, again, it's to decrease the number of students that are scoring in that blue on watch. And so this is a great graphic to see what that means. So, green means that they are on grade level, and there's a darker green above that one that's above grade level. Blue is those kids that are just on the cusp of being at proficiency. And so, in first grade this year, 22% of our students scored at that level. The winter assessment, thanks to so many snow days, is currently in progress. It should have been done a few days ago, but we have two teachers that are wrapping up. And so, for first grade reading, again, we want to get our students, at least 70% of them, up to meeting grade-level expectations. And in the fall, we had 24%. Again, that data is off, because we have two classrooms that have to finish the assessment. So, we'll keep you posted on that.
And the AGR grant goes up to third. So, that's what keeps those class sizes down at those levels. So, second grade reading, our goal is that 70% of our students will reach their growth goal for reading, as determined by the STAR. So, you'll see that in second and third grade, we use the STAR data to help us determine our progress. So, already, we have 72% of our students that have met that growth goal. Were you... Nope. Okay. I thought I heard something. The two strategies that we report to the grant that we are using to help with these... To reach these goals is the class sizes are 18 or under, and also the instructional coach. So Vicki Kramer works very hard in our literacy. And I would say this, these are some of the strategies for our second graders and our third graders. Vicki has started working with K-2 teachers to do some phonics training. We have those all-day in-service days, and she has been using two, one to two hours doing a phonics training with them. And now, as a result of all that good work, the teachers were like, oh, we need some resources. So we have some teachers at all those levels piloting a phonics program, and then they're soon going to be switching to a different phonics program, just to check them out and see which one they're interested. We're understanding that those foundational skills have been missing from our literacy program. So, starting in kindergarten, we're going to add that piece beginning next year. So that is definitely one of the strategies. But she also will go to all our different teams. She pushes in with some of our new teachers and helps them co-teach, like the guided reading groups, and different pieces of the literacy model that we're using. But she also goes to the team meetings and presents new strategies, helps them with their target time work. So that's some of the reason why we're seeing good growth here. In math, second grade math, we're also using that STAR... Oh, I'm sorry. Not STAR reading, sorry. STAR math from fall to spring. We hit 75% of those kids are already meeting that level. So, that's awesome. So, of course, we're not going to settle for that. We'll keep that number going higher. Again, our two strategies that we report out are class sizes of 18 and below, and that coaching. At third grade... Oh, I should talk about our math strategies. We have a number of teachers in our building that have gone through the math grant the last three years. We've got a fresh round of teachers that have signed on with Ashley to also continue that math grant work. But they are now leading our teachers at Red Creek in different topics throughout the year. So, on those full day, reading gets a big chunk of the day, and so does math. And it's been some of the most impactful PD that our teachers have gotten. They went through... The first exercise was to go through all their manuals and talk math vocabulary. So they mapped out on charts, what are some of the... What are the vocabulary words that you're using? What are the materials asking you to use? And then we all collaborated together, and they talked about, well, on the forward test, they're going to at, you know, starting at third grade or fifth grade, they need to have this level of vocabulary. So then, even second grade teachers were really trying to think about, okay, we're going to start using this terminology to make sure that we have those students on track. So it was really powerful. The last time they were talking, what was the topic? They had them all broke out. They had, I think it was multiplication. Oh, I don't know if that's right. But they split the four, five teachers and the two, three teachers. They had them working on tasks, problem-solving with manipulatives. And so, the teachers in our building have just loved that. And then they are able to just go right back into their classroom and use those examples.
Can I pause right there for just one second? The other challenge, when you think about the teachers and those professional development days at the elementary level compared to secondary, is all those teachers all teach math, they all teach English language errors, they all teach that, you know, so that their time needs to get to that depth of understanding and that level when they have to do all of them, as opposed to, I'm going to choose to go to math versus the other one. We've been... We've allowed teachers to kind of represent a grade level in the past. So if there were five fourth-grade teachers, one would be on ELA, one would be on math, one would be on science, one would be on social studies. And then they were supposed to try to bring that back to everybody else, but we know that that time just never happened. And so, those big days have been huge in all-meets-all. So every teacher of this content area in this grade level participates in these activities. And so that's been a big switch, but again, the need for time.
And we also have all our sped teachers included in all that PD, so building the capacity of all those teachers. So, third grade reading, we're at 76%. And then, third grade math, there we have some room to grow, but we'll get after it. We're currently at 59% of the students have met the 35th percentile, is the level that we are using.
The growth of 35.
Right. Yeah, 35th percentile. So, in third grade, we have class sizes that are 18 or larger. So, our strategy that we're using is the instructional coaching, not necessarily through Vicki, but through those math grant teachers. And Ashley is also providing some professional development. She was actually in and also did a session for our support staff that worked with the children in the math classes. So that... They really love that PD, too. So, any questions for you? Any questions that you have?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have a report from Student Success Committee? Do we have... No, we didn't mean... Okay.
There's probably another snow day, I mean.
Probably, yes. Okay, boys hockey co-op, no changes.
Just updating.
Yes.
There was somebody that was laughing. If we created a jersey that said Black River Falls Almost Under Lincoln, Melrose, Mendoza, Nielsville, that would be quite the jersey. Get the language there.
Does anyone have any questions about our current co-op that we have? And, okay, is there a motion to approve continuing with the same conditions?
I'll listen.
I'll second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Monthly expenditures, you saw in your packet, all of those. Does anyone have any questions or want anything pulled out for discussion? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the expenditures?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Budget center allocations now.
As I mentioned in my notes, we tried to take a little bit different approach to this this year. Just for a little bit of background, in the past, we have always done a per pupil allotment per building, and then have left that to the buildings to, we always say that we give them the pie, they get to decide how they're going to slice it within their building. And that sounds nice, but there really are quite a few fixed costs within their building that they don't really have a choice whether to pay or not. And so, that formula of the per pupil allotment was done a long, 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 long time ago, and we don't know the rationale behind it. But Jill certainly monitors each year who is... Which of the principals is having a hard time meeting the needs within their building? Which ones are squeaking out just at zero, and which ones maybe have a little bit of wiggle room each year? And so, we started the conversation this year from, instead of changing that formula, which is working in some of the buildings, are there some fixed costs that they pay for out of their budget that could come out of a district pot of funds? Which is kind of the same thing as increasing their funds, because again, the district only has so big of a pie, and so it has to come from somewhere. And so, from there, we had that conversation. So Jill, if you want to walk through that and then change us?
Sure. Some of the things that we talked about were some of those fixed costs that they have to deal with, licenses for software. Right now, all the buildings have to pay for the Skyward licenses, so for their student management syst... Not management system, but student record system. So they all have to pay for that, no matter what. It doesn't, you know, they can't change how they operate to make that cost lower or not. So we feel like that truly is a fixed cost, that perhaps we can move out of their building budgets to give them a little bit of breathing room to do some other things. Some of the other things that have slightly migrated over the past few years have been workbooks. Stephanie has helped with that out of her CNI budget. We'd like to continue that trend and pull some of those workbooks, the final pieces of the workbooks, out of Forest Street and Red Creek. So between those two major pieces, it would free up probably about $30,000 in all of those budget centers. Not each budget center, but overall. So perhaps Forest Street would have a little bit of relief, about $10,000. Red Creek, about $12,000. And middle school and high school, about $5,500 and $7,500 each. And as an admin team, we really felt like that was appropriate, because the middle school and high school are the ones that typically are pretty close or on budget or have a little bit left, where the elementary schools have been tight or almost over. So, that's what we felt was a fair process.
We also talked about some of the costs that have migrated over the years. It used to be that each building planned for the professional development attendance of their staff, and now, very, very frequently, if somebody wants to go to something, Stephanie will pay for the sub, and the building will pay for the teacher registration or something like that. And so, there's an awful lot more cost sharing between the district CNI budget and the building.
Rather than coming up, I know some had a concern with the per pupil allotment dollar amount. Rather than changing that, we thought, well, let's remove some of the costs out, so they don't even have to worry about that. And we know what that dollar amount is, and can free that up for them. So I... I'm not sure what the yellow ones across the bottom.
Oh, those are just showing that there's actually going to be $3,000 more in the building budgets dictated this next year.
Overall. See, it's 1,000... Oh, that popped up. That's right. It was... It wanted to go away. So this year, we plan for 1,714, and next year, we're planning for 1,731. So the dollar amount then went up, because we're accounting for more kids, which is fantastic.
So, for example, not only will Forest Street have a little reprieve from taking those licenses out and the workbooks, but they also, their budget center is going up by $3,800 as well. So they'll really have some dollars to work with. I just want to share, I was thinking, I've been thinking about this since November, because I was in Guatemala, and someone from Texas says, I understand your teachers are having to spend all their own money on providing supplies for their students. And I thought, we haven't changed that for all those years, and is that really true? And if it's so, we need to do something different.
I will say, there definitely are some teachers who still choose to do that. But I would say, supplies needed for our core curriculum, absolutely not extra fun stuff that they would like to do, certainly is possible that they do that.
But that per pupil allotment is where that would come from.
Their supplies, yep.
Correct. They are getting a raise this year, because you're taking out some of these.
Right. And then that's up to the building principal to work with their teachers on how they, like Dr. Seaberson said, divvy up that, slice that pie, and divvy that up between the teachers in the building, so.
And if Mary Jo was sitting here, she'd remind us of both the Education Enrichment Fund as well. So I'll just, I'll be the Mary Jo Radcliffe voice here, too. Yes. Okay. Does anyone have any questions about the budget center allocations? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll send you.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll talk about the budget process.
All right. So, February is the time when we are getting close to bringing to you a budget proposal for the 1920s, for the upcoming school year. You noticed there was a lack of numbers in this budget presentation. There really is an awful lot still up in the air in this data as to what will be the new budget. And so, as we know, with the change in governor, really, there are so many different factors at play. I think I talked about it a little bit last month, but we just mentioned again, there's that Blue Ribbon Commission on school funding that recently came up with their report, as well as Governor Evers, who submitted his budget proposal when he was still state superintendent. And so, we feel very optimistic about a budget when it does finally come, because those two documents, one prepared by, obviously, the governor, who was the state superintendent, and the other one was by a Republican-led group within the legislation, and there's overlap in some pretty key areas. And one of them being an annual increase that could align with the CPI, Consumer Price Index increase, that just came out for this year. It's a 2.44. So, quite honestly, even if we could count on a 2.44 increase on our per pupil allotment, holy cow, that would be a significantly different budget conversation than we've had in the past. The other is on the amount of special ed reimbursement funding. There was some overlap between those two budget proposals. And so, we don't have any numbers for you together yet, but we are also attacking the process a little bit differently this time, and that was something that we wanted to share with you. I know that we mentioned just briefly that government funding, best practices in school budgeting is a conference that Jill and Stephanie and I went down to. And we talked briefly about how we could use our strategic plan to drive our spending, as well as our action plans and our improvement efforts. And so, that is really what they are all about, is how to make sure, if you say this is what's most important to your community, to make sure that your dollars are directly aligned to that. And so, Jill's going to walk you through some of the foundational pieces that we've started to chip away at. And just for the record, when you're at an accounting conference, they care where you put those zeros a lot. They would have been eye-rolling. Actually, I'm used to it, so it's all...
Size.
Yes, size. Who brought her? Yep.
So, this is something we started talking about, like Dr. Seaberson said, at a conference. And it really hit home on, you know, it's not about the dollars we have available, it's how we strategically use those dollars. We have a strategic plan, we're talking about our strategic plan, how can we best align our budget dollars with that strategic plan? And it seems common sense, but we really haven't gone about it necessarily that way. This infographic just kind of shows that process, you know, trying to align your dollars with your goals. Where are your goals for the district? Looking at down the road, so we're in the infancy of this, so it's, we don't have all the background information, but we will be putting dollars to some of our different programs and things we're talking about. But it's really about finding out what things we're doing are working the best, and keeping the dollars there, basically, or adding to them, or what's our best bang for our buck, basically. So this is kind of that infographic, just showing that, you know, set your priorities, set your goals, what are your strategies to do that? There's some costing measures in that academic return on investment that you want to do. And we do do some of this. I don't want to act like this is all brand-new to us. We do do some of these things. I do do costings. I do, we know what salaries and benefits cost, and we have looked at different programs to know what they cost. But this really put it into a different, I guess, perspective for me, on how to get at it, to do it. And what I thought was interesting, so in smarter, everybody's heard of smirk goals, but the R is the resources. And it's not about what resources I have available, it's more, at that stage, what resources do I need to make that goal happen? And then we figure out where we might need to cut or change our priorities wrong. So, don't start from the mindset that, oh, we have to cut. What resources do we need to do this? And then later on in the process, figure out how we can get that done. I really liked some of the comments that we heard when we were at the conference, for example, "Strategic plan drives budget with focus on student achievement rather than limited resources." So that's just...
Sounds like a headline.
What's that?
Sounds like a headline. Did you catch that, Kyle?
And again, talking about our strategic plan process right now, talking about that continuous improvement. So this would be based on that, using continuous improvement. We get to the end, and then we see where we're at, what things do we need to tweak in the budget for the next year? So it's not just that one look. I do do a budget forecast model, but I don't, we don't heavily rely on that each year, because it's only as good as the two-year budget cycle of the state, unfortunately. But we probably could rely on it a little bit more and look to the future for some of those strategic financial planning.
One other thing I wanted to add, when we get to the, you know, how do we pay for the strategies, use the cost savings best practices, we've talked an awful lot about that as well, that sometimes when making the investment, just try something new. You have to dig pretty deep and make sure you're doing it to full fidelity. But then, something that they talked a great deal about was that continuous monitoring, at what point can you step off the gas pedal a little bit and start to back off the resources? Because that behavior, or that habit, or that program is so ingrained in what we do, it no longer takes as many resources as it does. And the other part was that each year, when we start a budgeting conversation, we kind of start from a, how big is the hole we have to fill this year? And that's tough to talk about how we should do things differently, and we always get there, but it's tough when we start with a hole all the time. And we always get there, but it's tough when we start with a hole all the time. They really focused on when you add something to the budget each year, what data are you going to set out to collect from that point moving forward that is going to tell you that that ad is having a positive impact? And so, you don't get to say, I'm going to use an example that I know Patty's had questions about in the past, school counselors. What data are we going to collect because we added another school counselor here that at the end of this year, we're going to know whether that was a good investment for us or not? What data points can we immediately put in? So when we are adding things to the budget, when we have proposed ads, and we are not there yet by any stretch, this is all part of the learning process, the right question should be, and how are we going to measure that moving forward? As opposed to, now, we sit here and say, four years ago, didn't we add a social worker? How's that going for us? Because that's kind of, we feel it in our gut, like this position is going to be helpful and this is what we need to do, but we haven't held our feet to the fire with that measuring tool of it. And this process is very much set up that way, that when you add something, you decide right away how you're going to measure its efficacy moving forward. And maybe that is a three-year timeline, maybe it is a one-year timeline, but at least have that conversation so that it constantly cycles back around. When something doesn't get added, it's there forevermore, amen, until somebody finds it to suggest removing it, but that there's a continuous review. And so, that gets at what Jill was talking about, that it's not budget time from January to April, it is a continuous budget throughout the year that you're collecting that data to support the decisions that you made during that budgeting, decision-making window. Does that make sense? It sounds to me really, really, really exciting, but also incredibly time-consuming. But when you think about it, these are, this is where the rubber hits the road when it comes to so much of what we do. So worth the time invested.
So one of the first things that we need to do too, in this best practices for school budgeting, there's five steps that we go through. And the first step is planning and preparing. And it was funny, when we were at this conference, we really got the feeling that, you know, a lot of the districts that were there, that curriculum and budget were not supposed to either like each other or get along or see eye to eye or have the same focus or the goals in mind, which was really odd. And we were sitting there going, we're not supposed to get along and want to hit the same.
They had separate breakouts telling them how they can work together, and it was very odd.
But so we already were ahead of the game because we already do a lot of collaboration around that. So, but one of the things that we felt was important was to set some budget principles. That's one of those first things in the prepare and plan. So this was in your packet as well. So the administrators at one of our recent meetings talked about, and these are kind of things that we believe and do anyways, but it was good to put them down in writing and talk about them. And just so you know, this looks a little bit different than what was in your packet because some of the verbiage that we took out didn't make it to the packet. This is our final draft. You got the, not final draft. So just talking about, again, student success, you know, that's what should drive our budget process. We already talked a lot about that. Using data to drive our decisions, we do that, we do that a lot. We talk about data a lot.
Everybody does.
But I don't know that we've always brought it back into the budget process. We talk about it with a strategic plan, but we don't talk about it with our financial plan. So bringing those two pieces together will make a lot more sense, too. Talking about, you know, cost effectiveness, we certainly always try to do that, but just putting it down here that that's what we believe, so we can come back to this and discuss it. And trying to keep some of the emotion out of it as well. It gets to be an emotional process when we're, you know, being in a smaller district, we can, these are people, when we're talking about positions and that, that's difficult as well. Prioritizing the core program, but then also allowing for some of those interventions that we've talked about, that's important. Looking at how we spend our funds, going back and reevaluating that at the end of the process and each year. Providing students with equitable access, talks a little bit about narrowing the gaps between the lowest and highest performing students, eliminating the racial predictability and disproportionality of which student groups occupy the highest and lowest achievement categories. Talking about fostering a barrier-free environment where all students have the opportunity to benefit equally. All this isn't going to happen in one year, so taking a long-term perspective, looking at goals that are multiple year, which a strategic plan is, matching again the budget to that. And being transparent, I believe we are transparent, but I think we can do a better job of that as well. And that survey, that was something that we asked, was about the budget and how else can we provide information to our community about the budget? So hopefully, we could find more about that as well.
And that currently is our goal, the financing facilities for the board, is that our budget process is transparent and, yeah.
I kind of whipped through this, but does anybody have any questions on this document?
We just felt like these are the things that are behind the scenes, but sometimes it's nice to see them articulated and something that can be shared, that this is what is driving the process.
Good plan moving forward, it sounds to me. Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, we'll move on to policy committee.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
Dr. Sieverson, you had put in the.
Oh, yeah, that's right. It got real small, I guess.
Yeah.
Sorry.
You got it printed out, but it didn't come bigger.
This was small, too.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
This was different. Oh, and the other thing was a roadmap. That was to keep us in check in those five steps to see where we're at in the process, the further down in those boxes.
It's kind of like a rubric for your alignment to the process, is what it is.
Yep.
Do you need one of those magnifying page things?
That's something that we're going to incrementally do because obviously, that would be a tremendous amount of work to get there right away.
Well, it's a lot of words. They go hand in hand.
In any district I've talked to, they said, take it slow, you know, don't try to ran this all in one year. So this will be a multiple year, but we'll get there, though. That's where we want to be. So I just wanted to share some exciting news. So this past summer, we were, we decided to go ahead and purchase our gas supply, our natural gas supply, from a cooperative instead of from WE Energies. In doing so, we took out the middleman, per se, so we took out some of the additional costs from going with WE Energies. And this little chart, this was an email, and we just pasted it in here real quickly. But so far, we've saved over $10,000 just in those three months by just making that simple change. So I just wanted to let you all know that by being a part of this cooperative, this W E two C. We are with about 25 other school districts, universities, colleges that are in this cooperative in Wisconsin. Overall, they have 100 cooperatives like us across the nation that this group takes care of. So over a billion dollars' worth of natural gas purchasing is going on, so it's not a small adventure at all. But just by making that simple move, we had to put new meters on each of our buildings so that WE Energies could know how much they're distributing, but we're getting the supply from a different supplier. So they hope that someday they can get some deregulation like that for electricity, but right now, that's not possible. Just the gas has been deregulated.
Even with our record cold days, even.
Wordex, that's right. So I just wanted to make them more aware of that. That's probably something you didn't know anything about.
No, good news.
And goes along with our strategic plan about energy savings.
And transparency. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to policy committee. You've seen that we had a meeting and we have first reading on several policies to review. And we'll just go through each one and how we came up with, or Dr. Sieverson presented quite a few changes that were just needed. And so, these are all voted from the committee to move on to the board for consideration.
So the first one is the code of conduct, and that is something that, each school is required to have from the state. And the part that was very appealing about this code of conduct, and I did not include the rule in there as well. So this hasn't been reviewed since 1999, and so it was a good time to review it. But also, the part that we liked the most about this sample was that it very clearly stalled out, here's our expectations with the code of conduct, here's the administrator's responsibility, next section, here is the staff member supervising responsibility, and then finally, there's a piece that is the expectations for the students. So recognizing that when it comes to students being accountable for their conduct, there is a role for everyone to play in that. And so, this has been updated with the W A S B guide as a helper and has been vetted through the administrative team, not yet through staff, but the administrative team felt very comfortable with the changes that were recommended. Questions or concerns with that? All right. Then there's the student removal from class, that is the code of conduct rule. And this really talks about all of the different rationale for why a student may be removed from class. And the part that is, the old policy was extremely long. I remember we, I remember going through making that with a team when it was, first became law in 99. And so, the new version is much shorter than that. And again, it gives the reasons for why a student could be removed from class. And it really talks about, a removal can be as simple as anytime there's instruction happening in the classroom, if that student is uninvited to be there, that is considered a classroom removal. So go sit out in the hallway while we're going to continue teaching and learning, we're moving on, that is considered a removal from class. And so, the part that is important to share out with all of the staff members, and after its approval here, the principals will make sure it is discussed in the buildings, is the parent guardian notification of that removal. And so, there's a very tight process in there for how that notification can happen and who should do that notification. So any questions or? All right. The next one, we have two tobacco policies. They're very interrelated. One of them is the student use of tobacco and related products, and then the other one is tobacco-free schools is the new name that we are recommending. And so, we'll start first with the student use of tobacco and related products. And this gives just a much more comprehensive description of the vaping, which has become a pretty significant challenge for us to try to monitor. It doesn't have the smell of smoke, it doesn't have, I mean, truly, the vape devices, if you will, come in so many gadget-looking ways that little USB flash drive that you slide into your computer is all that it takes for some students to be vaping. And so, it really is proving to be a significant challenge. And it's something that so many of our staff members have asked for law enforcement to give them a little education on because it's, one of them said, that's way too trendy for me, I don't know anything about it. And so, it's tough for them to help with the policing of it in the school if they're not familiar with what possibilities it has. But something that we liked about this is that it really went into the details so that when we were talking about student tobacco use at school, number three, it says, "The components, parts, or accessories of any product or device intended to facilitate the ingestion of tobacco, nicotine, or any non-medical ingestible vapor." And it talks about even rolling paper pipes or cartridges or similar refillable elements. I mean, some of those are about that big. And so, we are basically saying, if it is a tool used to help you vape, even if you don't have any of the oil or any of it there at the time, we are still counting that as if you had tobacco on school grounds and will consequence you accordingly. So any questions or? Unfortunately, sometimes when they're checking backpacks, they'll be, well, those are just vapors. You don't know what I was going to roll in there. We're not going to say, we don't care what you're going to roll in there, they're papers and tobacco is not allowed here either. So done, done with it. The other one, that used to be smoking and other tobacco use on school premises, this just really is more simply put as tobacco-free schools. And it is extremely blunt about what is acceptable, and it also gets very specific about broadening it not just on school premises, but when you're at a school sanctioned event. And so, I'll give you one example. Sometimes parents come along on field trips, and so the whole class is going into the museum and the parent will get off the bus and go over here and have a quick smoke before they go in. This policy would say, that's not okay because you are on a school-sponsored event, therefore smoking is not okay. So this broadens the definition from just school premises to any school-sponsored activities as well. Questions or concerns about that?
Does it specifically spell out transportation?
It says authorized agents of the district, example, authorized volunteers or chaperones are further prohibited from using such prohibited products in connection with the district-sponsored activity when students are present and the person is performing their role as an authorized agent. It did talk somewhere about vehicles, let me find it. The one up above it, it says, district sponsored function when students are present and the employee is acting in the scope of their employment. It also talks about the advertising of products.
It could be written there where it says, any district sponsored function, not a district property, is in the vehicle.
So are you thinking, like, in a car traveling?
I'm thinking a bus.
Oh, bus.
Simply.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, if they're acting, that would definitely be not okay because it talks of school function. If you're on the bus, you're in some school sanctioned activity, or you wouldn't be on a bus.
On school premises, yeah.
And smoking in a car in the school parking lot is not allowed.
School premises would be under the definition of school premises, our transportation system.
Definitely.
Still want to leave a loophole.
Yes, yes.
And even talks at the very end, it just says, members of the public who violate the tobacco or nicotine product use prohibitions outlined in this policy will be asked to discontinue, so choose to leave the premises, law enforcement officials may be contacted as necessary and appropriate. Sometimes it's just been awkward when you have to go tell somebody, you can't smoke here. Well, I'm not on school grounds, but you're here for a school function. And then it gets combative, and now we can simply say, tobacco-free schools, done. So any questions about that one?
So that will be included with anything asking for chaperones, so parents?
That's a great point to update our volunteer handbook. Might be a place to take a note of that. Thank you. So the last one that I have for you, we kind of dug into the AODA and tobacco, all of that stuff. So this policy is one of the recommendations from the W A S B Policy Resource Guide. What I appreciated about it is that it talks about the student alcohol and other drug abuse, and it was just far more succinct than the previous one that got a little bit wordy. And so, the bullets or the numbered are more clear, that no student may possess or use, distribute, sell, or purchase drug paraphernalia. It spelled out that clearly, whereas before, there was a paragraph that talked about the intent to sell or you may not possess it. And so, it just, it felt like there was a lot of people trying to make loophole discussions when clearly, it just shouldn't be on school grounds. This one feels much more black and white, it should not be on school grounds. The big editor's note there, I left this in there because I, that's a little further, I wanted to talk to the policy committee about it, and they all agreed with the same as the administrators. This policy sample provided you with a choice whether you wanted to be able to require a breathalyzer of a student. And what currently happens, if we believe a student is under the influence, we can ask them to take a breathalyzer, and if they say no, we can suspend them from school for a failure to follow a direct, you know, insubordination, basically. So we could still send that student home. This, if the board agrees with the recommendation, that we would be able to allow that. And if a student refuses to take the breathalyzer from a police officer or not from us, if they refuse it, then we will assume that they are under the influence and then would move forward with either the deferred expulsion or the AOD counseling or whatever that step may be. But if they're just going to flat out and say, no, I'm not going to take it, then we're going to say, well, then we're assuming that you are under the influence, as opposed to a one-day suspension for failure to follow a direct request of an administrator. Is everyone else okay with that? The admin team was supportive and the policy committee was supportive of adding that link. The challenge, of course, comes in when somebody appears to be under the influence of something and a breathalyzer won't find it. But the police have certainly been helpful in partnering with us, trying to figure that out as well. Not that it happens often, but? Questions or comments about that?
Okay, we will vote on these.
Actually, one more.
Oh, that's right, a student due process, yeah.
The student due process rights, that is a very old policy, was written in 1990. And those, the students' rights have been embedded into so many other policies, whether we're talking about discipline or courses selection or any of those things, that there is no need to have a separate policy on student due process.
Any questions on this for tonight? Amy, did you start to say something?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. So we will be voting on this for the March meeting. Okay, we'll move on to meeting minutes. The January meeting minutes were in your packet. Does anyone have any changes or discussion on those? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Okay, motion carried. Dr. Sieverson's administrative report is next.
Just a few things, if you didn't see the PR, our local civics team that was put together, this was the first year that the. was the first year that the Wisconsin Association.
Newspapers Association.
Thank you. Sponsored the civics competition. And so good for Mr. McKinnon and Mr. Shepherd for putting together a team. And our kids went up to UW Eau Claire and took first place. And so February 23rd, they go down to Madison to compete. There was four regions throughout the state. And so our kids are first place taking, and the first and second both go down to represent. So that was pretty exciting for those kids to go and for the first time and be successful.
Where is that at Madison?
I'm unsure.
Okay, because I'm there that day for WASB.
Would you like me to do some scouting?
Yeah, please. If it's nearby, I'll stop in. Okay, thank you.
You have heard from, I think there's some students that came in their RCL project where they've talked a little bit about the green team at the high school. Just a little update on their recycling project. Last year it was the milk cartons that they were working on. This year at the high school, they have a separate bin for students to put their fruit and vegetable extras in that they are not meant to consume from their tray. And the team or the FFA has actually bought a pig. And thank God they're not hosing it in that activity area. They are hosing it out at a local pig farm. And they take all of that leftover garden bar stuff and they feed it to the pig. And so when I was talking to Ms. Knodel and Mr. Markhardt about it, they shared that there are some students who are highly offended that we are fattening up a pig so that we could slaughter it. And so they choose to not participate, which is absolutely fine. And she said, "And on the reverse, there are some students who will load up on fresh fruits and veggies so that they can overfeed the pig." And so to me, it feels like student demonstration in democracy at its finest, both of them getting televied for what they believe is right. I got a little chuckle out of the pig. And so in the end, it's getting fed because it's growing. So that's great. I wanted to share briefly, Madison McCormick is a senior this year and she was intending on going to school for nursing and she was invited to be a part of, she wasn't invited initially, she applied and has been invited. And I don't know all the details, I just know that I've been chatting with her briefly and was going to cover do one of my Spotlight on Schools. There was over 400 students that applied and it is either at Rochester or at St. Mary's University, both in Minnesota, that has some kind of a program with Mayo Health, that if she is accepted, they guarantee her a spot in the nursing program. So it's not all that competitiveness in the beginning, they guarantee her a spot. And I believe there's some scholarship money included in that as well. 400 people applied, 40 got face-to-face interviewed, she was one of them selected for the interview and she went on the polar vortex day for her interview and was successful. And so she now knows that she'll be going to St. Mary's University in Winona as a part of this Mayo connection. And so I was awful proud of her. And that's an awful big pool of candidates to keep whittling down, whittling down that she was one of them accepted. So she'll be doing one of my Spotlight on Schools shortly, because that's pretty exciting. So a reminder about that business luncheon on March 1st, that was something that the board had said that they wanted to be aware of when that was happening. So remember that is the second annual one. And then there's those smaller breakout groups that happen in between. But March 1st is when the second annual large group one will be happening, not just that steering committee. And so if you're planning on coming, we would really appreciate an RSVP because it's tight in here. And so we are certainly, certainly welcome to join us, but please let us know so that we're not surprised. And that same comment for this Wednesday, if you're planning on coming to the servant-led community breakfast that's here at 7:30, please let myself or Marty know if you're planning on joining us because we have about 40 community people who have RSVP to that. So that's pretty exciting. So that's it for me. Elementary's already gone. Dave Rue, you're it.
Good evening, everyone. Carol Harmon, RCLA advisor at the middle school, shared out that 17 students competed at the STAR events at WWTC on February 1st. And all except one student are all going on to state competition at the conference in April. So congratulations to those students. Brian Snapper is the tech ed teacher at the middle school and he also has, runs a couple of different clubs, not the least of which is robotics club. And he had two robotics teams repeat or compete at Whitehall on Saturday, February 9th. And Brian himself takes the kids, that does Carol when she takes them. And Brian took the students and two students, TJ, let's see, TJ Gabhart and Hunter Nimmel, qualified to go to state competition in robotics at MSOE College in Madison on March 3rd. Congratulations to those students. And the final thing, kind of a timely share out, tonight we had a really good meeting after school with members of the, let me see, what's on my notes here? Yeah, we had several members from the Ho-Chunk Nation Youth Services, the Ho-Chunk Education Department, and the Ho-Chunk Social Services. And we met to discuss some student concerns that we had and wanted to see about bringing in some of the wraparound services and what could we do to help provide some additional services for our Ho-Chunk youth in the middle school. And I mean, we had to have a fantastic meeting, Bart Leckton McKenzie was there, Fabie Gay and John Dick and Daisy Padavone from the youth services. And we came up with a working plan to get some, identify some students, of course, have, you know, release of information and parent support and all that. Where they're looking at some of the life skills coordinators from Ho-Chunk Social Services could come in during tiger time, which is roughly 1:01 to 45, Monday through Thursday at the middle school, and to pull some of those kids out who could benefit from some of those life skill coordinator services. And I also invited them to our professional development time on, this Friday, where our three committees will be meeting. And again, the three committees are student academic assistance, student behavior, and parent involvement with communication. So I invite members of that team tonight to come in and sit in on some of those committees with us on Friday. So that would be well received and a really good meeting tonight after school. Any questions for me or?
Thank you, Dave.
All right, the high school, we also partnered with the Ho-Chunk Nation with talking circles that's been going on at the middle school for a little while. And we have them coming over now, working with students at the high school during our luncheon learn, and that got to go on second semester. Also, a few other things that we have going on. As you recall, last year we had changed from a ranking system for our graduates, starting with this freshman class, class of 2022, to cum laude. And we're going to be calculating that. It probably won't be a whole lot freshman year because there aren't a lot of things that they really can earn those points for. But we take a look at that after this first semester and then at the end of the year. And we're reminding parents about that. On March 6th, we have Parents Tally coming in. He is a speaker who's going to talk to the students about hope. He says, "My hope is that students will know that you matter and because you matter, you make a difference. The battle that students face every day, they have to know that there's hope." And that's a good message for them to hear. What else we have, scheduling coming up. We're pushing that back a little bit later this year. We generally have started that in January, but wanted to kind of focus on the wrapping up semester one. And we moved that back a little bit. So next few weeks, we're going to start planning on up scheduling for next year. Our parent teacher conference this year, and this is going out a little bit, is actually in March, but we're doing it a little bit differently this time around. A big and costly, our school social worker is creating a family night, bringing in all kinds of community partners and food and games and all kinds of things on March 12th to bring in more families and have them see some of the things. All of the departments are also presenting the things that they've been doing. The engineering lab is going to be hopping that night. And so all the different departments have some things to present about what the kids have been learning there. Also, the high school, middle school career fair has come up on April 9th. And a little bit more immediately, this week, Wednesday, all the juniors in the state will be taking the ACT test as well as our juniors here. We're hoping at 8 o'clock and 10 o'clock, mother nature helps us out. The rest of the students are going to be also participating in some events. The freshman class is going to be heading over to Western Technical College in La Crosse to get a tour there and see what opportunities they have for different career training and college opportunities. The sophomores will be heading up to CVTC, Chippewa Valley Tech in Eau Claire. And the seniors have been challenged to put in four hours to give back to our community that has given so much to them in the past 17, 18 years. And so they're going to be, some of them on that day, some of them throughout the rest of the school year, giving back to our community with some community service. So that's where we end.
And this is the first year that the high school has modified the ACT day that all students are now in attendance. And so AKA minutes of instruction, that helps a great deal now that we're inviting all of them to come to that day. Julie, would you like to share a little update on your work with the school safety committee?
Oh, sure. So on February 25th, we are doing a large-scale tabletop exercise here. We're going to be working with the emergency management with Christina Page from Jackson Tony. And she is going to help facilitate between the county, several deputies from the county, the city, several officers in chief, fire, EMS, hospital, and health and human services. And then all of our emergency response teams from each of our buildings. So we're going to be all working together collaboratively in this space, which now I'm thinking about it, we're barely fit in here. But it's kind of the first of its kind to do this big tabletop exercise and work through scenarios and be able to discuss them as we elevate the different scenarios and things like that. So it's kind of going to be really neat to have all those players in the same room. So I'm excited for it.
It's great practice for us, but it's fantastic that they're all willing to come and be able to respond like, you know, as opposed to us saying, "Oh, it's like, I wonder what would happen if," you know, then we have to wait to get back to everyone. It's really nice that they're all coming to be here and be part of the conversation. So just nice to have coordinating that.
Tammy, I would invite you to talk.
The big thing for the NSIS program, we have been kind of cruising along this year. The group has bonded really well. We've done a lot more academics and been able to do a lot more things. But over the course of the last two or three weeks, we've been able to copy places people in different alternative settings throughout the state. So we have brought back three more students in the last two weeks from alternate placements. So I would tell you, we are learning to work together again and with different personalities and different things going on. So we are just kind of feeling our way again with three new personalities added to the group at this point. So that's your end.
Thank you. Any questions for anybody? Okay, we'll move on to Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Just invite anyone to share anything about the convention. I was hoping that we would get together and at a board development sometime and more do, do more of that, but I don't know. Does anyone have any highlights that they want to talk about? If you can't remember back then, I don't know. Okay. I have, I have one thing to, right after the convention ended and Friday, as you know, I headed off to Washington DC representing Wisconsin at the advocacy work there that we had. And I'll just pass this, pass these around. It's on both sides. This was the focus of the NSBA to focus on fully funding the Individual with Disabilities Education Act. And as you can see on the back, the facts they want to reauthorize, we were able to meet with every single one of our Wisconsin representatives, our senators and our congresspeople in their office. There was one senator that couldn't be available, but his education aid was. And was received very well. We arrived right when the federal government started back in action again. So it was, everyone was very, very busy. And they hoped that we could come back in three weeks if things didn't work out this week. So that was good. But in, on the backside, I mean, this act, I think, is very, very important that NSB is focusing on is because we're down to funding at 14%. As you know, the special education, you know, costs a lot of money on our own budgets. And it was started out, they were going to fund, the federal government made it a mandate and we're going to fund it at 40, but it's never ever gotten beyond, I think, 21%? Is that correct? 21% or something. But this is one of the main focuses, that everyone talked to every one of their representatives. And then in Wisconsin, we also focused on, talked about updating the FERPA, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. And that was in particular need of several Wisconsin schools when they have a student who had, for instance, a violent behavior or something like that and was expelled and then they went on to another district, the information didn't necessarily travel with that student in a timely manner to, for schools to make a appropriate decision. And then what affects Wisconsin a lot was the impact aid to school districts. And we had a position paper because we have so many schools that get impacted. Black River Falls gets right now $349,217 of impact aid. And that's to offset federal land that isn't taxable. And that's always on the chopping block by everybody is to discontinue impact aid. So we, we talked about that. Any questions? But I have lots of information on that whole conference there if anyone is interested. But I meant to get a report ready for the packet, but I did not. I'll still do that though. Okay, thank you.
So before we disperse, you hopefully found some beautiful note cards by all of your spots and some things highlighting that, which is youth art month. Ms. Dahl does a fantastic job taking the kids' drawings and putting them into all kinds of functional uses. So aren't those just adorable? But then she also did include, if you look at the papers, it's kind of a decree, she appreciates getting to share these with the kids that look at what the school board believes strongly in the work that you do and so on and so forth. So if you would take a moment to fill this out at your spot and leave it here for us, I would definitely pass those on to her. I was found at the public library this morning in the room right up to the left when you go in, there's a beautiful youth art month display, but it's from our whole region, not just our students. But if you walk through, there's some really, 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 really great projects from our whole Midwestern region, which Ms. Dahl also coordinates all of those efforts. So if you think of it, drop her an email or a note or something, thanking her for all of her extra efforts. I don't know if I shared with you guys down in Milwaukee, that art competition that takes place down in Milwaukee. She's actually the coordinator and the judge of that competition down in Milwaukee as well. So she just does so much outreach, outreach, pardon me, art reach, huh? How funny. Outreach for advocating the importance of art in education. And she just really is such a fantastic advocate, I guess, for all kids. And so anytime we can show our appreciation with her, it is well, time well spent.
I've been to this library display twice now, but it really takes some time to go through it because it's very, very good. I was just totally impressed. I took pictures and it was very nice. Thank you. Okay, future agenda items, anybody have anything?
One thing I was going to highlight, and they might cringe when I say this, but the elementary folks are plucking away at their schedule revisions for next year. And if I say that we'll talk about it next month, that will put a hard deadline on it that we have to have something figured out for next month. Really, it's like two steps forward, one step back in the process, but we will have some updated elementary schedule information for you for next month.
Anything else?
I probably should have thought about this when we were talking about the school board convention, but there was that one, I don't know, that one workshop on engaging families, if you remember. Maybe that's more for board development, but I think that's something we should.
And so how about if I ask the elementary folks who already have some pretty neat plans along those lines for their parent teacher conferences for next year, I'll ask them to share that as their share out and then that will remind you of all the good things you heard there, I guess. And so then we can talk about it more after that, if that works.
Okay. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.